City of Pickwa Planning Commission is called to order. We'll be following a modified Roberts Rules of Order to conduct the meeting. What first will happen is for each resolution, the city planner will read the resolution and read the staff report. Then there will be discussion and questions between the commissioners and the city planner. Following that, we will ask for the applicant in regards to the resolution to come forward. The applicant can present whatever information the applicant would like to present, any questions from the commissioners. After that, we will open it up for public comments. And looking at the size of the crowd, I think we can limit statements by the public to five minutes or less. So if you want to comment either for or against a resolution, I'd ask that you come forward to the podium, state your name and your address, and then present the information that you would like to present. If there are no objections from anyone in attendance to the meeting procedures, would everyone please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in? Let it be known that all persons present to provide testimony at this July 11th, 2023, meeting of the Planning Commission hereby swear our firm, said testimony will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. All those in agreement, please say aye do.
Aye do.
All those opposed, please say opposed. Hearing none, thank you, you may be seated. At this time, could the clerk call the roll?
Gary Koenig.
Present.
Joe Wilson.
Here.
Eddie Harvey.
Here.
Shannon Brandon.
Here.
And Bradley Buck.
Here.
Okay, we have five commissioners present, so we have a quorum to conduct business. At this time, we'll look at the meeting minutes from the June 13th, 2023 meeting. Are there any edits, comments, or questions in regards to the meeting minutes of June 13th, 2023?
I actually have a couple to add for our own. One is the misspelling of your name, we'll fix that. And then on the second page, and I would like to introduce our new administrative assistant. This is Emily McCullough. She works at the front in the development department, but she's going to be our new clerk here with the Planning Commission. Last paragraph cites Melissa Clooney, our previous administrative assistant who was doing the minutes, and that should be Emily McCullough, she did prepare these. So with those corrections.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we accept those corrections in the meeting minutes?
Still move.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, those corrections are accepted into the meeting minutes. Now we will approve the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the corrected meeting minutes to Tuesday, June 13?
I'll make a motion.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 The meeting minutes of June 13th, 2023 are approved. There being no old business, we'll move on to new business.
Resolution PC 22-23, a resolution requesting a recommendation for a rezoning of approximately 119 acres. Parcel J 27-045800, approximately located on the corner of Looney Road and Snodgrass Road, recently annexed into the city limits.
Good evening, everybody. So to start off with, we are rehearing the same topic that you heard at the last month's meeting, and the reason for that is because I did not notice nearly as many people as needed to be noticed. We use a GIS application from the county. I had to try to do that manually, and I was thinking of other things, and I missed a bunch of people. So we, in order to be procedurally accurate, but also to give everybody the notice that they're due, we're rehearing this item as a rezoning, which means this property came into the city, it was fully annexed, and it stayed with the zoning designation or the closest approximate as the one it had in the county. So it is now currently zoned agriculture, just like it was in the county. We are, we're simply rehearing that same, the same set of facts that you looked at last time, which is to, a proposal to rezone that property to IL light industrial. And I can go over some of those things because some of the people who are in the room would be new. So we're looking at a large tract of land that is, for the most part, north of the Indian Ridge subdivision. There's a cutout that's not included right at the corner of Looney and Snodgrass, but everything else is there. Across the street on Looney, there's a bunch of other light industrial product. That is in the county. Light industrial that would be built in the city would look similar, but you would see things like landscaping and the need to pave and curb entrances. It'd be, there's a little bit of a more finished look to some things that come into the city. Otherwise, the end uses could be quite similar, we don't know yet. So I included a picture on the second page, just showing that this tract of land is pretty close to the I-75 corridor, and part of what was stated in the comprehensive plan is a desire to develop land that is strategically placed in that corridor into job centers. So that is one of the reasons we as staff felt that this was a wise proposal. We, if you look at the street network, I guess I just wanted to be clear for anybody who's living in the Indian Ridge subdivision, that there's, I think it's Chinook that goes up to the north end of the parcel, there'd be no connection through any residential subdivision to anything that's going on in the north. So the connection would come from Looney Road or Snodgrass, that's how that would work. There's a drainage ditch kind of running through the property on the south that might, because we're sort of guessing at how things could lay out in the future, we really don't know the answers to these questions yet. But because there's a drainage ditch here, there's zoning requirements to create some spacing between residential and industrial. We don't expect that the land on the south side would be, you know, developed very intensively, and then you would see a little bit more on the north, north of that drainage ditch. It's yet to be determined at this point, but in the staff report, I included the list of uses that the IL allows by right, and then the other things that could come back before the Planning Commission as a special use. So there are, I mean, the likely, there are likely candidates, maybe warehouse and distribution or low and moderate impact industrial uses are kind of in those category. Library, emergency service facility, a plant nursery, animal care office, vehicle sales and rental, those are things that could possibly be developed there, but there's a lot of siting and planning that needs to occur before we really know that, what would go there. And I believe the applicant is present to answer any questions as well.
The, I provide, I asked you to present the comprehensive plan, which clearly identifies this space as residential. It's not, in the comprehensive plan, is light industrial. There's a lot of other areas. There is a, you know, along the periphery of the city limits, the actual zoning along that periphery typically extends out beyond the city, and there is always a bias for the most restrictive zoning, which is the residential. So could you explain why the recommendation would be light industrial? I read in there about it's near interstate, but that's also an advantage for residential. So please explain why the diversion from the comprehensive plan.
I, sure, but I don't, I don't see a diversion at all. I think the, you'd ask me to look at this, the conservation and development map, which is included in the Planet Pickwa Comprehensive Plan. It does not get as detailed as saying industrial, residential. It just has a lot of what's bordering the city that was not conservation due to, you know, topographical kind of overlays, like a river or, you know, a stream or something like that that would limit it. You know, that gets overlaid onto the map, and then the existing development that's already there gets overlaid, so you can kind of see what's residential, what's already developed. And then what this parcel is labeled as is strategic growth, which doesn't get as detailed as what kind of land use.
Well, on the plan that I'm looking at, the number six states neighborhood expansion area.
Ah, I see.
And six, when I look around the periphery of Pickwa, those are residential areas that are all identified as neighborhood expansion areas.
And I think that...
Unless, there are areas that are clearly called out for as economic expansion areas, which of late we've, you know, recommended heavy industrial, light industrial, those type of things, in accordance with the comprehensive plan.
That's a good question, I just don't know if that label is really...
Isn't that what this is, though? It's number seven? Isn't this the parcel we're looking at, right here?
Six, this whole area is six.
Right, that's this over here.
And that's a road. Okay, it's just a, just a comment, and I...
No, no, I just want to make sure I understand what you're talking about.
My comment is, is that the comprehensive plan would call out neighborhood expansion areas in this area.
Okay. I just don't, I don't know that we would be able to, I can't tell honestly by looking at it, if number six is meant to indicate just those other parcels that it's sitting on, the parcels that are, so we're considering this 119 acre tract, and then you've got that label number six off to the east of there, and then just to the south of there, there's a label number seven that says economic expansion area.
Economic, yeah, and...
I don't know that there's, we know where the border of that should be, but...
The intent of a lot of these zoning is, as you go out beyond the city limits, you protect the investment of the citizens beyond the city limit, just saying.
I would say, I'd love to talk about that a little bit, but...
So there has to be measures to protect that investment?
Yeah, no, and I would, here's, here's how I would plan something out as a planner. I would think about the I-75 corridor being something that you don't want to live right up next to. I don't think we would plan residential to be right on I-75, but being adjacent to an exit or entrance is, is an amenity for anybody, for light industrial, for residential, those are all good, that's a nice thing to have. I would plan a buffer, that's how I would do it, just so that you don't have noise and pollution right next to where people live and where their kids are outside, you would put some kind of industrial corridor there. And I think that's the intent, is to use that Looney Road access to continue that pattern. There's room for debate on how to, on how to plan something properly, but that's kind of, you know, there is some, some thought to why do it this way, other than just, just for the heck of it, or just because it was proposed.
Okay, well, I made my comment, thank you.
How, how big is, you talk about a buffer zone, on that, so on the plan where it shows this drainage ditch, the southern part of that, and then the next thing is the housing development, how big of a buffer zone, is there a specific requirement between light industrial and residential, and if so, how big is that?
That's a good question. The setback between, so there's something in our new code called transitions, so when you hit the boundary of a, of one zone and you're moving into something more intensive, there's a, an area of buffer. And that area, I think in this case, I don't want to misquote, but it's, it's not nearly as big as what you're seeing. It's more like 20 to 50 feet, something like that, and there's a landscaping element. It can't be, it can't be too egregiously big, because most tracts are not this large. This is a very large tract of land. I'm just thinking there, there may be, it would make sense for a site to drain into that area, possibly. I don't want to venture out too far ahead of the applicant and the property owner themselves, but that's, I'm guessing that that's going to be the appropriate way to do it, but of course, staff in future reviews, when you're talking about subdividing, when you're talking about planning out stormwater, and maybe having a stormwater detention pond, or whatever it is, these are things that get considered in that, in the development review process, and many of those processes might come back for public review at that time. So what we are doing at this stage is getting the land in the city, and then figuring out what's the appropriate future for it to be marketed as, so that the next steps could happen.
One final question, is this in a floodplain because of that drainage ditch?
It is not. I did look at that, and I also, I think I may have over, I don't know, I, we have a riparian buffer standard at this point. We would certainly want whatever drainage ditch is, is the final layout of it, to have some protection. We want some vegetation protecting, you know, against erosion of soil off the site downstream and hurting other people as an effect. But this is not, I looked, it's not on the wetlands map, I don't think it's considered. It doesn't really start as a, I think a branch of, I forget, I'm sorry, I forget which creek this is.
S Creek?
S Creek, that's it, until you get farther west, then it's indicated as such.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, is the applicant present?
Good evening, I am Rob Alexander, I reside at 8468 Union Shelby Road, and I am the owner of Indian Ridge Builders and one of the stakeholders in Teeter's Real Estate Investment, and am representing them tonight. What's being proposed is this 120 acres, and I have shared with you some of these maps, this map in particular, if you take a look at it, will show you that we have two additional parcels to the east of the property that is being considered and has now been annexed. Those two properties have been annexed into the city for a long time, and so we were wishing to get it incorporated in, and then that brings us to here tonight for the zoning designation. I would like to point out to you that, in that there are 120 acres, and then 65 acres adjacent to it, and then another 80 acres adjacent to that as well. So just, so you get an idea of what we were hoping to accomplish with what we are doing here. This property is immediately across from six businesses, all of which are still in the county, which means you have no ability to exercise any jurisdiction over them, and you could inconceivably end up with a Kmart Kroger scenario that we have on the west side of town, because they are not in the city. We chose to get in the city because we feel that's the appropriate way to help the community grow. Give you a couple of things to kind of help maybe understand this a little better. Indian Ridge is currently home to over 200 families. But if you will look at the second map that I presented to you, this is a platted development plan for an additional 400 residents that we can build on that existing 140 acres that you see behind and to the north of Indian Ridge. So we have a large amount of residential development property available to us at this time. In addition, since 2015, there were 44 properties to be developed on the existing area of Indian Ridge, which I would take you to the third map that I showed you here. Of those original 44 properties, 38 of those properties have been sold and 35 homes have been constructed. If you take a look at the next page, this is what we call the point in Indian Ridge, which is just south of some of the property that we are discussing. In 2018, 2019, we developed a new property, a new street there, multiple streets, added 37 new properties there, and we have constructed 13 new homes on those 37 properties since 2019. That's a total of 48 new homes, 52 properties in the Indian Ridge community in the last eight years. None of these are production homes, none of these are multifamily homes, these are all single-family custom homes, some with values in excess of $800,000. Of the 48 new families that have chosen to build in our Indian Ridge community, 33 of them, or 70% of the homes that have been built in Indian Ridge, were built by people that did not live in the city of Pickwa prior. So that represents pure growth to the city of Pickwa. In addition, we have constructed numerous homes in our community, in Pickwa as well. Teeter's Real Estate now owns over 300 acres of land that can be developed. We are highly vested in this community. I personally have three daughters and a nephew and some of my best friends that live there, right up against this property. We continuously promote this community with things like movie in the park, community garage sales, Christmas contests, and one of the biggest national night events, national night out events that's in this entire area. Again, we invest in our community, we build a sense of community, we want to increase the value of our community. And that's the reason I share this information with you tonight. We would not ask for a zoning designation that would in some way negatively impact our $3 million investment in property. So we're not asking to do anything that we believe is going to negatively impact the Indian Ridge community, and in fact, we think it will enhance the Indian Ridge community and the city of Pickwa. Quite frankly, with 400 properties yet to be developed for new homes, we need new business in the city of Pickwa. We need people who will come and move to Pickwa because it's a great place to live. And for that to happen, we'll have to have places for them to work, for places for them to shop, and for, for other things that we all need for living. And so we are asking that this property be zoned light industrial, so that we have that opportunity when something comes along, that we might be able to enhance that part of our community. We felt like it's appropriate where it is and what's across the road from it, and it fits the landscape that's there. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this point.
Have you gotten any comments from any of the homeowners about this at all, are they aware of it, or?
They're, obviously, from the fact that they did not get notified, it was upsetting to them that this happened without their ability to have an input. So I have spoken with a number of them, in fact, I've spoken with the majority of them who live on the affected properties on Seminole Way and on Kiowa Court, most of which are homes that we built for people, so we know them well, and have tried to help them understand what, I mean, they were more than anything surprised that they didn't get notification and had a little bit of panic, like what's going on behind us kind of thing. So yes, I have had communication with virtually almost everyone along those two streets.
And what did they say?
They were asking questions, they just wanted to know what was going on.
So nobody seemed to be too worried once they had the information?
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, all we're doing right now is incorporating the land and getting a zoning designation, so it's not like there's some master plan out there with some, you know, immediate prospect.
Right.
So...
The two properties here, are they, do they currently have a zoning classification?
They currently have a zoning classification, yes.
A residential?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what they're platted, in the plat. Any other questions?
It, my only question is, it doesn't, the industrial, this, it's zoned light industrial, it still has to not compromise the quality of the surrounding environment of neighborhoods and districts. And I'm, what I'm hearing is you're going to manage that challenge.
Well, I have, I have actually explained this when you asked about some of the neighbors. If you think about the fact that we have $3 million invested, and if we did something on that property that decreased the value by 10%, we would be making a $300,000 negative impact on our own real estate. So there's no right, no, no way are we going to do anything that would affect our ability to build on those 400 future, on those 400 future...
Very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any other questions for Mr. Alexander?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. At this time, are there any one in the audience that would like to speak for or against Resolution Number PC 22-23?
Hello, my name is Mike Stein, I live at 2928 Seminole Way. I am here this evening to address the Planning Commission in regard to the previous legislation that was passed by the Planning Commission and by the City Pickwa City Commission. I thank you for correcting the issue of these notices not being sent out to the residents surrounding the 119 acres that is presented tonight for the rezoning of that property, as this now gives us the opportunity to speak. I am here this evening because I feel strongly about the Indian Ridge subdivision and how it was developed. It was developed and sold to all of us as a family-friendly neighborhood, and we were told that the likelihood of anything built behind our homes on Seminole Way and Kiowa Court would not happen in our lifetime. With that being said, I know the Alexanders want to begin selling that 119 acres for light industrial development, which does not fit all with the close proximity of the Indian Ridge housing development and the many children that live in that area. For many years, the city of Pickwa has stated they wanted nice housing developments for our community, and by approving the rezoning of this evening would destroy the Indian Ridge development as it stands today. I don't know of anyone that would want to move into our subdivision knowing that light industrial facilities would be their backyard view. There could be a large filling station like Love's, a car wash, a store and lock facility, or warehouses behind all of us that would bring in much traffic and noise from I-75 to our back doors. Light industrial behind our homes is not what anyone in Indian Ridge wants or ever wanted, and I believe that you as a Planning Commission would not like something like that being built behind your homes. We have all invested much money and time into our homes and properties, and we love that it is a family-friendly neighborhood. The rezon behind Indian Ridge would not be an enhancement, but a detriment to our community. I ask that you consider, thinking strongly about how this would affect the residents of Pickwa, and I ask that you consider how this will affect our Pickwa community and especially the residents of Indian Ridge with moving this from an agricultural district to light industrial district behind family homes. Please, think of the citizens first and foremost.
Any questions of Mr. Stein? If the buffer area was increased a little bit, would that help your concerns a little bit?
I don't believe so. I think it's tough because we all want to take somebody for their word, right? You want to do a friendly handshake and spend 200, 300, 400,000 dollars with somebody that makes a promise, and then years go by, and maybe you hear something that, that kind of is uneasy. And, and the way this whole thing fell was, seems like it was a mistake, but it could also seem like maybe... also seem like maybe it wasn't a mistake. I walked door to door, Seminole Way, I know all my neighbors, Seminole Way to Kiowa Court, and asked anybody if they received any notification. In fact, I was here a few weeks ago and brought that up, that's why the letters were sent out. And it just seems, it, it seems strange that, that we didn't receive it, and that, you know, nobody was here to make a statement that night because nobody received any notification. So I do thank everybody for, you know, starting this process over and giving us an opportunity to, to, to speak. And I feel like going back to the word, it's just tough when we're not going to, we're not going to build anything behind your house, you're, you're going to have a cornfield behind your house, and, excuse me, that's how I was raised. When I grew up, I had a cornfield behind my house, so did my wife. And so we're cruising the lot, and we see, holy smokes, we could actually build our house the way we want to, in the same way we grew up, and, and, and then the, the owners of the property say, you know, we're not building here, we're building what I would believe is east Indian Ridge. So I think it was, it was startling for everybody to hear that, and, and that's why, that's why I'm here. I don't think a, a bigger buffer would, would make a difference. I, I think a lot of people purchased that property based on the view they were going to get. And if you imagine if you lived in Florida, everybody wants to live on the beach, right? You, you know, we all can't live on the beach, but I kind of feel like some people, maybe this is my beach, the cornfield. It's just, it's a, it's a great place to sit in your backyard, and man, you can just zone out, and there's just, just nothing.
So my, my, excuse me, my question then would be, it's not necessarily that it's, the request is to rezone to light industrial, is your concern more about the development period of the hundred and twenty acres?
Light industrial, yeah, I mean, yes, both. So light industrial is the more concerning aspect of it. Any development, I think, based on the word I was given in 2014 or 15, it just, I don't know, I don't know really, it's, it's just tough to, to go from here and, nothing will be here in your lifetime because we're building this way, and now we're, we're planning on, and I know there's nothing set in stone, but that doesn't mean anything two years from now.
So if it were even a different zoning district, you, you still, and correct me if I'm not hearing you correctly...
Yeah.
You still wouldn't necessarily be okay with it being a different zoning district, you're just, you just want a cornfield?
Zoning district as far as building properties or buildings, or is that what you mean?
Yes, I mean, a le, say, say a less intense zoning district.
Correct. Reason being is the, like I said from the beginning, was the, the idea of, when my wife and I drove that lane, I believe on Seminole at that time, there was maybe only two houses, maybe three, there might have been three. So we had an opportunity to pick whatever place we wanted to pick, any plot of land. And, and, and the selling point to the majority of the people on Seminole Way and Kiowa Court was that your backyard's agricultural, it's going to be a cornfield, and you don't have to worry about us putting a house behind your house, and, and that's a selling point. And, and gosh, that was a selling point, and it, and it sold us, I'll tell you that.
And at that point, when you purchased the property, I'm still fairly new to the Planning Commission, so I've missed out on some years here. Was this parcel annexed in at that time, or it was still out in the county at the time that you purchased the property?
I believe it was in the county because it was just recently annexed.
Okay.
Yeah.
There wa, there was a, the comprehensive plan, actually, it's a public record, it, it talked in terms of not expanding a certain type of residential, but more changes in density residential, a lot of different residential type of things. And we, since that time, we've got a new code, so it even makes it more complicated because there's different, but the idea here is that there, there might be increased density of homes in this, in this area if just develop per the comprehensive plan. What's your view of something like that?
You mean more homes?
It, it would be homes, yes. But it could be smaller lots, it could be more, you know, the, the residential could be a different type. But the, the plan calls out for, you know, more densification of, so, sort of make, make greater use of the land availability. What's your view?
If you could describe that to me in greater detail so I could understand it better, I could probably answer you better when you say greater density.
What about extending the, the lot sizes and homes that are already along Seminole Way to the north?
So basically, this, all the way up?
You're saying if you're giving, you're giving us an opportunity to purchase the land, is that what you would say?
I'm saying a developer would develop it for residential purposes. That was, that was the intent of the comprehensive plan, so I don't know, that, you know, when you're buying a home, you're not aware of what all the plans are, so...
Right, that's correct, and, and I'm, clearly I'm not, but I would, I'm going to still stand and say the same, the same thing, it's just I was sold on the land based on...
It would be agriculture at all times.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I...
Yeah, and, 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 and I know, and, and you can't, it's, it's taking a man for his word, and it's not a, it's not a written document, and, and I realize that, but, you know, I kind of thought there was a time where you could still do that sort of thing.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Stein, when you talk to your neighbors, you talked about going up and down Seminole.
Yeah.
Did they, what kind of feelings did they have about this issue?
Every single person I spoke with was very in line with the way that I've spoken with you tonight. Not one single person was aware of that this was happening, we didn't get...
That, that aside.
That aside, yeah. That aside, every single person that I spoke with was shocked, alarmed, and not one person was interested in that, and every single person that I spoke with, except for maybe two people, if I could be specific, were not, not okay with hearing this news.
So did they have the same feelings about only agricultural development behind them, or would new homes be okay with some of those or not those? They all wanted the cornfield like you did?
No, it, so, and we were, and I can't speak for everybody, but I, I truly believe that we were all sold on that, what we were told, that there was not going to be, and everybody said the same thing, well, that's what they told us too. Well, holy smokes, if I would have known there was any idea they were going to do that, I would have never spent that kind of money here. And, and not one person was like, oh, it's all right, no big deal, I, I can, I can handle that. Everybody was shaking their heads and in disbelief, and not, there wasn't anybody that was okay with it. There wasn't anybody that said, ah, you know, don't worry about it, I'm not worried about it, you shouldn't be worried about it. Every person that I spoke with, I was out until late night getting bit by bugs, talking to people, just to spread the word so people knew, and just to try to see what their thoughts were, and their thoughts were in line with my thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay. Anybody else present want to speak for or against resolution number PC twenty-two dash twenty-three?
Hello, I'm Eric Ashton, I live at...
What, I think?
Eric Ashton.
Ashton?
Yep, I live at twenty-nine, twenty Seminole Way. And for the most part, I agree with everything that Mike has said, we were a little surprised to hear this news. We, we purchased land and began building in 2016, late sixteen, early seventeen, moved in in eighteen, and at that point, as I recall, the multi-phase plan for Indian Ridge didn't include the parcel of land that you've got highlighted, it was further to the northeast. So we were under the belief that, again, for the foreseeable future, there wouldn't be any development behind us, and I mean, it had a, it had a significant impact on whether or not we purchased this plot of land, we weren't really in the market, we had actually lived in Indian Ridge prior to that on Chinook around the corner. So seeing that this available lot was the last one on the road, and had this, at the time, you know, full tree line and the cornfield behind us, kind of a country house in the, in the city area, we decided to go ahead and reach at the time beyond our means to be able to purchase this lot. So in the last five years, we've invested a significant amount of money on top of the original purchase of the house or building of the house to improve our backyard, our view, specifically to feature the country landscape, if you will. So I certainly would, I would not be thrilled about any kind of development at all behind us, and the, at most, you know, would hate to come outside and see a warehouse or a car lot, or I guess even light industry, you know, similar to whatever the factory is that's across Looney on the other side. We are actually three lots in from Navajo, so we would be very close to the most affected by this, and we can, we can already hear trucks on Looney Road going to the factories that are, that are on the west side of the road. So anything directly behind our house would absolutely impact the enjoyment of our property. As recently as last fall, we added a, a patio with landscaping so that we can spend most of our time in the backyard, and then we were kind of slapped in the face with this a few weeks ago, so. Just wanted to get the opinion out there, and I, I believe that the people that we've talked to as well would share the same opinion, and I've, I've yet to talk to anybody who would, who would be excited about having something built in their backyard.
So, so there again, you're along the lines of Mr. Stein, that not necessarily that it's light industrial, you just don't want development behind you at, at all on that property?
If I'm being selfish, of course not, I would love to not have anything behind me. The level of tolerance goes down, the heavier the zoning gets, you know, if it, if it turns out that it's residential, you know, we would probably stomach it, not happily, but we would, we would deal with it. And then the heavier that zoning gets, I think the faster we would probably jump ship. And I, we purchased this with the plans of keeping our children in Pickwa and going to school in Pickwa. I work in Pickwa, my wife's a teacher in Pickwa, we're both from Sydney. We came here with plans of making this the family house until the kids are out of school, and I think if we were to get a car lot behind our house, that would happen, we would, we would be gone a lot faster.
And, and then the same question to you also, what if it were a larger buffer zone?
It depends on the size of the property behind it. I don't know if you can make a big enough buffer zone if it extended all the way to the east side of that property, which would be directly behind us. It wouldn't matter to me if it were twenty feet or two hundred feet, if there were a warehouse thirty feet tall behind me, I'd still be upset about it.
Any other questions for Mr. Ashton?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else present want to speak for or against resolution number PC twenty-two
Hello, everybody, my name is Kristy Fisher, I live at eight zero one West Snodgrass Road, directly across Snodgrass from this property. And just before I speak to what I want, could I get a clarification on something that the property owner mentioned? The adjacent properties that they own to the east of this, he said they are zoned residential and platted, I, I don't think, I didn't understand that that's what they were, I thought that they were still ag one oh one, so can somebody help me and, can you guys tell me if that's...
Yes, let's have a copy.
So, so this is how it actually is now, that, those properties, or is this a...
So what, what you're looking at is a preliminary plat, so it currently, it's all still in two big tracts of land, it hasn't been...
And that are zoned ag?
No, they're, they're in a residential category, I've got that on the screen.
Okay.
So they're zoned RE six, which is what a lot of, a lot of residential areas in Pickwa are zoned, they're just single-family residences.
Okay, because I thought when I looked today at the, on the auditor's site, that they still say one oh one on them.
Um, you know, if you...
And I could be wrong, for sure.
If you, if you click, actually, we could probably check, but if you click through this to this auditor's site, they have, they're gonna, yeah, so what you're seeing is this land use designation right here?
Yes.
And you're correct, it says one oh one, because that's what it is now, that's what the land actually is, it's actually a farm, there's no residence there. What its future could be is the zoning.
Could be.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, very good, because I, to me, that did not seem very clear at all.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I don't, I don't think I've signed off on this. Have I signed off on this?
Oh, no, because it's, it's much older than all of us, it's been, it's been...
It's been years before us.
Yeah, there's a preliminary plat that's, and basically, if they were, if, if the property owner wanted to start developing out this way, you can kind of see it on this copy, I don't know if this is what I gave you, but you can kind of see, they take sections, and they say, okay, we're ready to build twenty more, and then they, they build out the street network for that, and then they subdivide those lots at that time, and that's what's called a final plat.
Okay.
And those come before the commission as well, when those are ready to happen.
Okay, like how they, like how the point was just done.
Exactly.
Okay, I appreciate your clarification, because I was a little confused there, so, um, okay.
This, where do you think about this?
No, yeah, go ahead.
It seems pretty organized for a preliminary plan for residential area, seems, seems fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I, again, I thought it was still ag, so, and it is, but preliminary, okay, I'm with you guys, again, I appreciate the clarification. Okay, so I own forty acres across from this property, my parents purchased that land in nineteen, the late nineteen seventies.
Which, which forty acres?
Um, eight zero one West Snodgrass Road.
Is it right on here?
Uh...
Just north of Snodgrass, I guess.
Yeah, north, right here, this is my property, right here, this little teeny place.
Oh, right here, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, this is the, yeah, that's me right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You see, you all see that?
Where is it?
It's this property right up here.
If you look on the picture there, oh, where did it went? It's the green...
Right here?
Little corner, Snodgrass.
Right here, just up, this area here.
Right, where it is.
Right there, you got it?
Yeah.
Can you see the map? Okay. Thank you.
Guys, oh yeah, no, I appreciate it. So I'm from Dayton, my parents are from Dayton, and they purchased this property in the late nineteen seventies because they wanted to live in the country. They built a house there, they improved the land, I'll probably cry because I'm a crier, so just let me get through it. So they raised their kids there, my sister went to Pickwa High School, she now lives in Pickwa, my nephew goes to Pickwa High School, I now live at the property, and I am the president of the Miami County Local Food Council, I'm all about Miami County, I'm all about Pickwa, I want to live here until I'm buried. My parents loved the property, my mom completed a reforestation project on the last, on the last ten acres of the property, where she planted four thousand trees, she planted lots of other trees on the property, and we love that property, we love it as a farm. I chose to move back to this property in the late nineties to start a business there. I ran an organic produce business and grew proper, grew food on that property for twenty You know, I, 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 both my parents have passed at this time, and my husband and I live on the property now, it's a farm to us, and that's, that's why... And that's, that's why we live there, because it's a farm and surrounded by farmland. We grow hay, we grow hay for my neighbor who's right around the corner, who raises wagyu beef. You know, we, we are in the community, in the farming community, and we like it like that. We, we just, we do not support this property being annexed to light industrial. I can't imagine what it would do to our lifestyle there, as well as the lifestyle of the other residents on Looney Road and on Snodgrass Road. I'm, I'm concerned with the change this will bring to our local community. I'm concerned, I'm concerned with the change it will bring to my lifestyle. The reason why I chose to live on this property, the reason why I chose, my parents chose 50 years ago to, to, to choose this property. I'm concerned that nothing is mentioned in the staff plan about the concerns about traffic on the residents of Looney and Snodgrass. It's only concerned, and I'm going to read it, "The presence of the Indian Ridge subdivision, as the landowner is well aware, must be protected from the intrusion of unwanted traffic. Future connections for the tract of land will come from Looney or Snodgrass Road only." That's across from my house, where whatever's going to be there that's up in the air right now could be a car lot, could be a fueling station, could be many of the things that are listed there. Now, yeah, maybe if it's a plant nursery, sure, maybe that might be nice. But still, that has increased traffic. And so there's nothing mentioned in here, we're just kind of thrown under the bus. It'll only happen on Snodgrass and on Looney Road, because the property owner owns both properties. Of course, they're going to be concerned about supposedly about their residents that live in the subdivision, but there certainly don't seem like there's a concern at all for the rest of us. I am also concerned about excess drainage from the McKee branch of the Rush Creek, even though it goes west to east. It is still going to drain somewhere, and where it's going to drain is onto the corner of Looney and Snodgrass, right onto my property, right down the edge of it, right into Rush Creek, and floods there all the time already. Okay? So I'm concerned about that. So that's, that's, that's some of my land there that gets flooded every time from raining right now. So it's going to be worse. I can't imagine that it's going to get better. Maybe it will, I don't know. I'm concerned about polluted runoff onto my property from parking lots and from fueling stations and from semis and from whatever else might happen there.
Do you have about one more minute, please?
Okay, I'm hurrying up. Thank you, I, thank you for telling me, I appreciate that. So anyway, this is going to change drastically and will drastically affect my home life at my house. I've lived there for 50 years, and, and, and that should count for something. It seems like the property owner has lots of land area annexed to things that they could build with. I just do not think that light industrial at that spot is good. We've already got the folks on the other side. There's always, already a lot more traffic due to those there. I, I can't imagine somebody, a road coming out right in front of my driveway where every day there's somebody going in and out of there. A million, tons more cars. So I'm upset, and thank you for, thank you for bringing it to our, that this came because I didn't get the, the notification, or I would have been here complaining. And I, I, I appreciate your time and your consideration, and I'm just not for light industrial there.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher.
I have one quick question. Totally understand where you're coming from. I too was raised on a farm, so. However, you can also expect, you can also not expect land to stay agricultural forever.
Well, there's certainly a lot of agricultural loss in our country. We could certainly keep a lot of ag land.
Yes, you can. But when it's, when it gets annexed to the city and has utilities available and things like that. So I guess what I'm asking is, is it just light industrial that is the issue where perhaps a residential development of that area would be tolerable?
I think on the same kind of sliding scale there. The more dense or the more industrial would definitely be a turnoff. A lighter residential with larger plots and possibly a buffer, because I know then there's certainly lots of things if ag land butts up to residential land. You know, I have horses, I have farm animals. I do not want to have to keep my farm animals in my front yard because residential is right across the street. So I know there are some problems to that as well. But I would certainly tolerate and be much more in favor of a residential with a lower, with a higher density.
Lower.
Lower, thank you. Lower density.
Any other questions of Mrs. Fisher? Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
You're welcome. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else present want to speak for or against Resolution Number PC 22-23?
Hi, my name is Teresa Stivers, 1121 West Water Street. It's obvious there's going to be change. That's, there's, there's no doubt that change has to come. The question is, how do, how do we plan and make changes that not only you get the community buy-in, but you improve the community? I was called to a meeting at Over the Rhine in Cincinnati a week and a half ago. And I don't know how many of you have been down to Over the Rhine in Cincinnati in the past year. Have any of you been down there?
Yeah.
To see what they're doing? There's a, there's a development group, it's called 3CDC, Cincinnati Center City Development Corps. It's a nonprofit real estate development and finance organization focused on strategically revitalizing Cincinnati's urban core in partnership with the City of Cincinnati and Cincinnati Corporate Community. They, in, in doing so, they've also been able to add projects for affordable urban, urban housing. They've found ways to maximize the uses of the buildings that were already in existence. They have, they've brought in, there's a community pool. There's like a, a place where you go up and pay. One side, if you go to the left, when you pay, there's a city pool. If you go to the right, it's a, it's a splash park with the sidewalk kind of squirty things going on. The point I'm making is, there's a, there's a lot to be done, but I feel like you're getting a lot of pushback from the community because you're not getting them involved. And I think it might be worth a field trip down to Over the Rhine and look up some of these people from 3CDC and sit down and talk to them. And talk to them about your vision and what you're thinking, and see if maybe you can get a couple of them to come up here. Maybe share some ideas, because what they're doing, they not only are doing it well and improving the, the, the property and the uses of those properties for everybody in the community, they've got the, the community buy-in. Some of the low, low-income urban housing is a, is a little miffed about it, but they are addressing that problem as they move forward. It's not just, it's, it's, it's a, it's a fully integrated plan where the needs of almost everyone is met. Somebody's going to be upset, it's, there's no way around it. You're not going to be able to please everybody. But I think this might be a, a way to look into it with a fresh set of eyes and from a different angle, and it might be able to help you find mentors to help develop an integrated process that would help maximize what you already have and that would minimize the encroachment on what you have outside of town. Or at least perhaps go with something like the, the larger lots with the, the residential. So I, I don't know. I don't know what the solution is. All I know is there's change coming, and people down here at the Over the Rhine are doing a fantastic job of it, and I think it's worth a field trip and a conversation.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak for or against Resolution Number PC 22-23?
Hello, my name's Michael Woody. Address is 3028 Seminole Way, Pickwa. So after listening to other folks, I feel the same way how, about the, the home that I'm currently in backs up to the woods like these other gentlemen have talked about. It's wonderful. We love it. But I also know, understand that, like the lady just said, sometimes things are going to change. Now, we've lived there for eight years. So how long can I hold Rob to his promise? So that's all I'm saying, is I love it where it is. In my heart, I want to trust Rob, and I believe this, I believe that they will make it palatable if they end up trying to build homes in there. That's just my opinion. I'd like to think that's true. I don't have kids in school, it's my wife and I. So I don't have quite as big of a, I guess, maybe my skin in this game at this point in my life. So, but I just wanted to say that, that much. It is nice, and hopefully this commission is, is smart enough to figure it all out and, and make some people happy. And I, I think that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Woody? Thank you, sir. Anyone else present want to speak for or against Resolution Number PC 22-23? Mr. Alexander?
Would you like me to introduce myself again for the record? I'm Rob Alexander, 8468 Union Shelby Road.
I got you. Thanks, sir.
I think one of the things that's probably most disappointing is that on our tagline, in fact, if you look at our letterhead, it says, "Indian Ridge, Pickwa, Quality Homes with Integrity." And when people come up to the front and suggest that they represent everyone in the neighborhood, they're not here tonight. I don't know that that's a true statement. But I also know that it wasn't true, that promises were made that have been broken. And that if we had not started developing land in Indian Ridge back in the late 80s, there would be no Indian Ridge, it would still be fields. I am a lifetime member of the Pickwa community and have lived in Spring Creek Township pretty much most of my life. I own agricultural land outside of what we have here. I understand the farm community, I understand the desire to be in the country. But I also understand that we would have never had a Pickwa East Mall, which is now a Walmart and a Home Depot and all the restaurants and the Upper Valley, the Miami Valley Mall. We wouldn't have the Upper Valley Career Center, we wouldn't have Edison State Community College or a Pickwa High School or a Pickwa Junior High, had we not developed property in our community. And owning property to build homes on, if we're not willing to develop, is worthless. And I certainly understand that people don't want, and, and I can't emphasize enough again, we own that land too. We aren't going to do anything that's going to bring negative impact to that community. And I will stand by that. I will also stand by that as we all who are part of the ownership of this corporation get older, we're going to pass on and someone's going to buy the land. We at least are local people that care about the local community. If I'm a New York or a Cincinnati developer or a California developer, I have no concern for the feelings of the people in this room or people in our community. We do care. We do want the best. We've already turned down opportunities to sell high-volume housing in this development. It would have been very lucrative, but we turned it down because we want to protect the community that we've built. And so I think it's disappointing when we hear people say things like they were promised this or promised that, they're disappointed. I think the reality is, is no one should expect that they're going to live on property that they don't own, that there isn't an opportunity that something might happen. I live in the country. I have a home that was built right next to me. I don't have any control over that. The farmer sold them a property, they build a home. So I think the reality is, is we're trying to offer the best possible scenario to our community, and that we're trying to develop it in a way that would be positive for our city leaders. It would be positive for our homeowners, and it would be positive for us as a land development company. So I, I think the, the other thing I want to address is they talked about polluted runoff. We talked about, you know, that's not going to happen. Polluted runoff's not going to happen, which is why we are choosing to be in the city. The properties across the road that are in county are less, um, less regulated. I'll just put it that way. Less regulated in what they can and can't do because they're in county code. I just want to be clear, that's why we came into the city, is that we would be willing to develop under the code and the ordinances of the city, which would make it better for the people in our community. And so again, I just want to make sure that you're clear, we're highly vested, but I'm also going to tell you that at some point, if we don't get to move forward on our properties, we're not going to be here to own it. I'm 62 years old, I've lived in the Spring Creek Township, like I said. At some point, we've already lost a 50-year-old brother-in-law to cancer. At some point, it's not going to be us owning it. And at that point, it's going to be a lot harder to convince people who are out of state to not do this and not do that. So we're trying to be cooperative, we're trying to do what, keep in mind what's best for everyone. I'll restate, I've got two daughters' properties who back right up to this that we're talking about. And so again, I just want to be clear. Do you have other questions for us as a developer?
I have-
Any questions, go ahead.
I have one. So looking at this map, there, there are three properties here.
Correct.
These two are residential.
They were platted back in the late 80s.
Right. And, and you're proposing light industrial here. Why light industrial?
Well, again, look at what's happened since we started this in the late 80s. There are 200 families on 600 properties. Thirty, only 30% of the people who buy in Indian Ridge are from Pickwa. What that tells me is people are coming in from outside of our community, because there's not opportunities here that create employment. It, it, to me, we need work, we need jobs in the city of Pickwa. You create jobs, I can build homes. If we don't create jobs, there's no one to buy homes. So to establish another 120 acres of residential land is just silly. And to bring our property into the city so that we can have it zoned agricultural and pay taxes on our, our, is silly. And so that, our intention would never be to do anything other than to do what would build our community, grow our community, and I think we have a track record over the last 10 years that proves that's what we've done.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
You say it's silly to build houses there. What, why is that?
No, it's silly to think that we are going to be able to build houses if, because there won't be buyers.
But yet, you've been so successful so far.
Well, so successful on 200, over, over, what are we looking at, 30 years? So you're talking another 60 years if, if that, to fill out that other property. And that's if we continue to get out-of-town investors to buy homes.
So in your opinion, that market is not sustainable anymore?
In my opinion, if we don't have something to drive, draw people to the city of Pickwa, to draw people in so they have employment, we won't have a lot of opportunities to build homes. People with jobs locally will build locally.
And yet, you said 30% were, don't even live, didn't even-
Correct. So imagine what we could do if Pickwa had more jobs. Instead of selling 50 homes in the last eight years, we could have sold 150 homes. I only have to take you 10 miles to the road down south. I'm a member of the Home Builders Association of Western Ohio, and I have many friends in Troy who have built 10 times the number of homes we have in Troy for obvious reasons.
So, these light industrials that you have in mind would be, I mean, what kinds of things would they be that are going to employ that many people?
So, the first thing is, is a light industrial is a zoning classification, and we have absolutely nothing in mind right now. Our goal was to get our three properties incorporated into the city of Pickwa, two of which have been in there for twenty or thirty years, to get that third property, which is adjacent to other city properties, and therefore, we couldn't imagine a reason why we wouldn't zone it into the city of Pickwa. That's it. We don't have a master plan that says, hey, we're going to build up, none. Keep in mind, we've had opportunities to sell out those other two parcels to high-density builders that would have greatly lowered the value of the existing homes, and I can show you incidents in Troy where that has happened. But we resisted the temptation of gross profit, because we care about our community.
Any other questions, Mr. Alexander? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One, one question.
Oh, we have one more question.
Yes, Joe.
Would you be open to a, a little bigger buffer, buffer area to help make that transition a little easier for the-
I, I have no real, I, again, I, I'll say it again, I've got, uh, two daughters and five grandchildren that live right up against this. Uh, there is a wooded tree line that's there, and, yeah, I mean, my vision has always been, and again, I only represent the corporation, I'm not here that I can't control everything that happens there, but I'm here to represent them, but I think the goal has always been that there would be a significant buffer, that tree line, a hill, green area, whatever it is. There are businesses now that you can clearly see from those properties, you can see Forest Products, you can see B&amp;D Transportation. There's already a lot of truck traffic. B&amp;D and, and Pickwa Transfer and Forest Products run a lot of trucks up and down Looney Road every day. So, a- again, we don't have anything right now in mind, we're simply trying to get our property, uh, in, uh, incorporated into the city, and zoned so that we can move forward.
Uh, I can't tell how far the tree line goes to the north. Do you have any idea how many, how that would be affected by the current buffer that we require? I mean, I don't have any-
I think the tree line is like very, is, that he's referencing is right there on the property line, right?
Right. And, and there is another tree line that goes to the north. I mean, quite frankly, we've, we've protected the tree line from the farmers. I mean, they want to take the tree line down because there's more ground to farm. So, I mean, it, the irony of all this is, is we've worked really hard to try to do what's right by our community, a lot of times unforeseen.
So, we would be protecting that tree line regardless if, if this goes forward, correct?
That would be the goal.
The, and, and actually, that would, i- if it helps at all, it would also be a requirement. When you cut trees down, you do need to replace them, um, at this point, with our new zoning code. That's part of what we're trying to do, and, and orienting them in a way that's creating screening is advantageous to everybody.
So, that, so that current buffer that we require would include all those trees along that line?
It'd be wider, it'd be deeper into the lot than that.
So, so if we would increase the buffer to include all the trees currently there, would that be an issue to you?
You wouldn't even need to increase it, it, it would already encompass that, that much.
Okay, so they're already within that current buffer?
Yes.
Okay.
As I recall, the old code was less than twenty yards, fifty feet. What is the new code?
Yeah, let me, let me just pull it up, so everyone can see.
I, as I recall, it was the same. You can't require, I would stick with the code.
Um, it's going to take a minute to load, there's, I can't make any promises.
Well, while she's looking at that, any other questions for Mr. Alexander? Hearing none, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And you can get back with us on that. But, what, is there anyone else present that would like to speak for or against Resolution Number PC 22-23?
I just have one more question.
Okay.
The businesses across the road, what type of businesses are there? I know they're out in the county, but-
Yeah.
What, what, what are some of the-
Um, you've got two transportation businesses, uh, Pickwa Transfer, B&amp;D Transport, uh, trucking businesses. You've got a, a wood processor, um, and there is a, at least one light manufacturing, uh, operation there, and I'm trying to recall the number of buildings, there might be a second. So, all of those are, um, typical light industrial-type uses. I want to, I, I just, you know, feel compelled to offer a few comments, um, but I want to focus on, on kind of the economic development point of view, and the, um, respond to some of the, uh, suggestions that were made, or things that, uh, I understand there, there are varying opinions, but if we think purely about what the code is, and what zoning is about, and comprehensive plans. So, the, you know, clearly, people are very passionate about their little corner of the world, and, and we all are that way, that, any of us that take pride in our property or, uh, the neighborhood we live in. And that's good, I, I applaud that, I like when people care about where they live, that's a good thing. But there's also, um, you know, property rights are equal both ways, right? So, um, if I own a tract of land, and I want to develop it, and I can do it within the limitations of the applicable governing bodies' regulations, I have the right to do that. And so, it's the same, um, same that way as it is for someone who has purchased property and, and expects certain rights to be honored, uh, and, and respected. And I think, what gets missed sometimes is, this body, the planning commission, exists for the very purpose of facilitating an orderly development of the community. So, the, the tools that are at your disposal are not perfect, but they're there to provide a, a map, a compass, if you will. Um, and I'll say compass in the context of a comp plan is developed at a thirty thousand foot elevation. So, you're looking at the community in very broad terms, and trying to anticipate things ten, fifteen, twenty years out, in regards to what makes sense for the development patterns in the community. And you end up with these nebulous little circles on the map that say expansion, economic expansion, or neighborhood centers, and they're intentionally nebulous, because no one knows exactly how those individual parcels are going to end up developing. It's just not that granular, when you're, when you're looking at it at that level. But it gives you some guidance in terms of, you know, if we, if we develop in these general terms, within these parameters, we'll have a, uh, an orderly development pattern to our community. And that's so important, because then it allows us to invest in our infrastructure in such a way, so that we're putting the money where it belongs. So, you're putting the pipes at the, at the larger size, the roadways at the larger size, to accommodate the areas where you're going to have higher traffic, or, uh, increased demand for utilities, versus having to make that investment everywhere, right? So, you're setting yourself up to be able to plan, and then at the, the land use level, you put a separate set of tools in place that get a little more granular. Now, we're getting down to the parcel level. So, you have zoning regulations that put those constraints on how individual sites can be developed, so that you can mitigate those incompatibilities between adjacent uses. And every community, any developed area, has varying use types that at some point abut one, one another. And so, that's the whole purpose of zoning, is how do you mitigate those, those conflict points? And create some transitions so that they're, um, they're, they're able to coexist without one being, having an adverse effect on the other. That plot process is, is, you know, it's, it's linear. So, before anything can be under the jurisdiction of the city of Pickwa, that property owner has to choose to want to annex that property into your city. So, they seek that annexation approval, and with that, they have some idea about how they want to utilize that land, whether it's for agricultural purposes, or for industrial, or housing, or whatever it is. They need the appropriate zoning entitlement to be able to plan for what the intended outcome, or the targeted outcome is. So, annexation, zoning entitlement, and then, you can spend the money and put in the effort to, to plan for how it will develop. So, the preliminary plan you saw for the Indian Ridge subdivision earlier, that was laying out how that housing development can, can be developed out over the next several decades. And that, that document was approved in the eighties. But it also is what drove, uh, an understanding of, okay, well, we need to extend sanitary manes and water manes of a sufficient size to serve this, this number of house tops, rooftops, once this thing develops out. So, that's the linear planning, and then, once the preliminary plan is there, and they develop the streets and the infrastructures in the ground, by God, you can come get a zoning permit and say, I want to build my house right here, on this lot that's appropriate for residential. And guess what? There are setbacks, and there are landscaping requirements, and there are minimum rear yards. So, you have those regulatory controls that control how densely developed that neighborhood's going to be. And so, it's the same thing here, if, if you've got, you know, we need housing, and we need industrial, we need jobs, and we need places for people to live here. We also need a diversification of our housing product. So, what's happening in Indian Ridge is outstanding. I'd love for that whole thing to be built out tomorrow. But those are all single-family products, three, four bedrooms, and that's not the only product that the market wants. So, we need other housing development activity in other areas, diversifying what we have available in our market space. When you look at the, the Looney Road corridor, and County Road 25A is, twenty-five A is a minor arterial by definition. Looney Road is a collector route. Those types of roads, as opposed to a, a local, a minor residential, are designed to carry a higher volume of traffic, and in, in those instances where there's, you know, truck traffic, heavier truck, traffic, to stand up to those kind of conditions. So, no wonder there's two transportation operations on Looney Road, because it's, it's very conducive to them being there. And that, the, the discussion about residential versus industrial proximity to the interstate, it's convenient for both, I agree, it is convenient for both. But residential is a net loss to a community when it comes to the tax revenue side of it. Industrial-
They don't have income tax, property tax?
You have income tax, you have property tax, but when you look at the services provided, at the end of the day, it's a net loss to the community.
Okay.
That, that's a, that's a pretty well-documented, um, indicator that's out there. Industrial is a, is a net gain, and so, it's helping to pay for that heavier-duty infrastructure that is in closer proximity to the interstate, to accommodate those additional traffic burdens, and so on and so forth. All that aside, that location, uh, the, the convenience to the interstate, um, the type of roadways, uh, makes it suitable for industrial development, in my view. And I, I would tell you that, um, there's a perception that we have, already have a lot of land for industrial development, go develop that. Up until about a year ago-
That's not a perception, that's a reality.
No, it's a perception, and I'll tell you why.
Reality.
Let me tell you why, Gary.
I think you need to look at the comprehensive plan.
I think you need to listen to this next one.
Okay, I'm listening.
I'll give you some context. You can have land that is well-suited for industrial development, but if you don't have landowners that are interested in allowing for it to be developed, then you don't have developable land. And so, for decades, that's been the situation in Pickwa. Now, it's starting, we've turned the corner, we've got a couple tracks that were, fell in that bucket, which we've now got friendly control, and folks are interested in developing, and that's good. And we've gotten some strong interest in those properties. But there is no reason for us not to think that if we have another opportunity on Looney Road, that we shouldn't pursue that. And so, it, I'm not, I'm not trying to berate anybody, I'm just trying to point out some of the, the differences and views, and why one might make sense here. The other thing, I, I just, I think it's important to realize, is the, you know, the comprehensive plan, uh, the comp, comprehensive plan, yes, is the, is a community engagement process. And we had a substantial amount of constituents in the community who were engaged in that, uh, planning process. Now, and, it may predate some of you, and it's probably time for it to be updated. But it was, was not without a significant amount of community input. So, the, the planning commission process, the, all the planning mechanisms, those different stops along the linear process, and the, and the engagement that goes into the comprehensive plan, that gives you that high-level roadmap, that's all part of the process, and that's all part of what gives you some framework to work with it. Look, it's zoned ag, there are uses in, in an agricultural zoning district that might be far more offensive, uh, than light industrial with the proper buffering and transition area, okay? So, I think that's important to realize. And I think it's also important to, to note that there are plenty of light industrial, um, developments that are contiguous to residential. You need not look any further than across the road, uh, across the interstate, where, uh, classic metal roofing sits adjacent to the residential development, Stein-Halber and, uh, the other streets there right off of Country Club Road, which is some of the highest-valued housing stock in our community, I would hazard a guess. And it coexists just fine, there's a riparian, there's a buffer that runs between them, so it's got that kind of natural buffer that we talk about intentionally providing. I'll just close with this, look, there could be, you know, somebody from out of the town, uh, who owns this tract of land, and, and maybe has the same interest in developing it, and they would not have the same vested interest in, in what happens there, the outcomes that are produced, as we have here with a local ownership interest who wants to do something that he feels in his best interest for, in terms of his ownership of the property, and suitable and compatible with, with the community's interest. And so, we, we want very much, um, to work with folks just like that. And if, you know, if we can't find ways to work with our residents and our local development interest and, and landowners, um, then we've got a, we've got a tough road ahead of us, let alone working with developers from New York who buy property and have, don't care about Pickwa. So, that, that's, that's just a point of view, and I, I'm, I'm responding to some of the comments made, but at the end of the day, I would tell you that it's a very suitable tract of land for, for the type of, um, interests that we see inquiring about the community. And if you don't have property to be able to, uh, pursue those leads, then you, you don't get those, those, uh, projects. Happy to respond to any questions.
Yeah, my question is, um, when I look at the comprehensive plan, it's clear that they looked for neighborhood expansion areas outside of, you know, uh, Eagle's Nest, uh, all of the residential areas that are in the periphery, they called out neighborhood expansion areas. Now, it's also, on this one, you're, you're calling out the Looney Road corridor, well, you're proposing a hundred and twenty acres. Why can't you propose a, a parcel along Looney Road for development? Hundred and twenty acres, you're infringing on the more restrictive residential, and clearly called out in the comprehensive plan, residential development for this area. So, I, I just, I think this is an interesting, uh, proposal, I think it's a little bit, um, ambitious, and may not take into account what's already there, and already in the Pickwa comprehensive plan. I, I think we, you, you kind of need to look, and it resonates. You've got industrial, you expand out, you're proposing industrial. You got residential, you expand out, proposing residential. It's, it's, it's a pretty, uh, pretty, it resonates, it's, it's kind of the way it kind of should work, I think, in my opinion. But anyhow, that's one opinion.
Well, at some point, those two uses come together, and I think that, that bubble note, you know, neighborhood expansion, is recognizing that there was existing residential product nearby, and that it's inevitably going to expand. And the economic expansion note, which is also right there at that intersection, right?
On the other side of the road, and a narrower corridor for economic expansion would be more than palatable.
You cannot predict from a comprehensive plan exactly where something is going to fall ten, fifteen, thirty years from now, but regardless, the, your point is equally applicable to the light industrial that's right across the road. It too, has a natural desire to want to expand, because of the roadway infrastructure and everything supporting that type of use activity.
The very essence of zoning-
And so, somewhere, they're going to abut, and that is where you have a transition-
Is that the city establishes zoning policies. And it's well-established and well-supported in the court.
Quite familiar.
And it's not a taking of personal property. It's established in the comprehensive plan, which everyone saw.
I think we need to keep in mind when we talk about the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is a guide. It is a living, breathing document that changes with the, what word do I want? It changes with the times, it changes with what the, the public, the city, the people want to see. Just because it's on here in this, it's not like a zoning map. A zoning map is hard and fast. If it's this zoning, this is what goes there, this is what can't go there. Your comprehensive plan, it shape-shifts. It moves. It's not necessarily straight down a parcel line. It is, it has to be able to adapt to the market realities. And yes, these are two things right next to each other, the neighborhood expansion area and the economic expansion area. it won't matter how many residential properties we have. We'll have an overabundance of residential properties, because people will leave to go to the cities that have industry and can support the residences, the industry, the infrastructure, the schools. And if we don't move with that, we're going to get left behind.
Any other comments by the commissioners?
Any questions?
No more questions. Thank you, Mr. Schmiesing. Any other comments from anyone present? We have a redirect.
Teresa Stivers, 1121 West Water. I just want to be clear about what I was suggesting. I wasn't suggesting that we go down to Cincinnati and hire their developers to come up here and fix the problem. What I'm saying is, Over-the-Rhine had problems that were much more profound than you're facing. They found solutions that fit the community, and not just, I guess, for me, what I hear is, there's a plan, but it all feels like disjointed puzzle pieces where they don't mesh and it doesn't meet the needs. In one area, it does, but then in another area, it's, it's an offense to the needs of this, this piece. And what they did at 3CDC was they found a way to bring in people who were concerned about the community, people who were already in the community, the people, education, the community spaces, the industry, and small businesses. They found a way to bring them in and revitalize an area. I seriously recommend taking a field trip down to Over-the-Rhine, take an afternoon, walk around down there, look what they've done in those public spaces that were violent neighborhoods that were not being, people were afraid to go down there. There's a police presence, but it's not overkill. It's, it, there's, there's a sense of safety, there's families playing in the parks, there are young people going to all the different businesses and stuff downtown, there's a lot of stuff happening, it's exciting. They've taken some of the old schools, and one of them, they built over 100 residential apartments inside the school, and it's gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. They've got flower boxes on these buildings with the old iron fire escapes that are working, and it just, it's, it's like stepping back in time but into the future at the same time. It's an awesome project. I'm not recommending you go down there and grab them and say, hey, come fix our problem. What I'm saying is, go look at somebody who's done it and done it well, and find a way to use them as a mentor to help replicate what they're doing, because it's not just working. The, the value in the community's coming up, the desirability to be in the area's coming up, the, the community buy-in is there, the education buy-in is there, the investor buy-in is there, the young people are coming and they want to be in the area. All I'm saying is, find somebody who knew how to scatter the pieces on the table and make the puzzle work. I'm not saying go down there and hire them, I'm saying, this is a problem that needs to be solved from the inside, but it's a good idea to look outside and find out who's doing it well. Because when we walk with the wise, we grow wise. If we want to do what somebody else has done to do it well, then we have to find somebody to mentor us on that journey. And I think there are opportunities out there.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for against Resolution Number PC 22-23?
My name is Doug Greis. I live at 1140 Barrington Drive in Troy, Ohio. I am, and my wife are part-owner of Teeter's Real Estate. And I wanted to just take a moment and share, I listen to these folks, I can certainly understand and that love their cornfield in the backyard. Four years ago, my wife and I built a new home, and we had a cornfield in the backyard, and it was, it was wonderful, we loved it. Today, there are about 40 triplexes behind us and 150 homes on the other side of that. So there's a lot of rapid growth. We love the cornfield, but life does go on, things do change, and we have a choice, we could leave or we could stay, we're going to choose to stay. I wanted to also share something, another thing that happened that these folks may not know about. I'm in business and I was approached by a Cincinnati builder a few years ago, who was very interested in buying out a lot of our lots. So I entertained the thought, I took it to Rob, I shared with Rob, and he was not very favorable about it, because he was deeply concerned about the quality of the homes, the size of the homes, and he was very, very adamant about that he maintained a very good relationship with the people who have invested. So, that's just the other side of the story, and I'm not saying that to make Rob look good. He didn't know what I was going to say, I'm just telling you from the heart, he very much cares about you folks, and I think is really trying to do the right thing. So, thank you for your time and your understanding.
Any questions for Mr. Greis? Hearing none. Anyone else here present would like to speak either for against Resolution Number PC 22-23?
Christie Fisher, 801 West Snodgrass Road. And I'll only take a sec, I just wanted to respond to something that Mr. Schmiesing said. If the Looney Road corridor is already built to withstand this heavy traffic, so be it, but Snodgrass Road is not, as far as I know. And so, if we can consider that, if that is going to be entrances and exits onto Snodgrass Road that will have to endure heavier traffic, that's going to be like rebuilding that whole street. And my property, as everybody else's does, goes right up to the edge. I got trees there that are already being cut down by the power people. So I'm fearful of that road, if it's going to be an entrance and exit to that property off of Snodgrass Road, that that road will have to get redone so that it can, can withstand this heavy industrial type of traffic. So I wasn't even thinking about that until Mr. Schmiesing said that. So, that seems to me that if there's entrances and exits on that road, something will probably have to be done to that road, so that is another concern that I have. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
So just to address that a little bit, so when Mr. Schmiesing was talking about how this is kind of a linear thing in there, basically steps that we take, so there, there's actually a step in there for, for what you're talking about. So when it gets down to the level of a business wanting to, to maybe parcel off part of this property, you know, they're going to look in the zoning code, at the, at the setback requirements, I mean, all these different requirements. But one of those things is too, is traffic. And, and I'm assuming that the city has already taken this into consideration because of their recommendation in the staff report, that based on the type of business that may front Snodgrass, there may need to be some improvements made to Snodgrass to be able to handle whatever type of, you know, if it's a business that, you know, is, that doesn't have semis on it, it, it may not need much or if any improvement. But that's one of those things that's further on down the line, but it is something that does get addressed.
Right, well, if it's something that's further on down the line and it's coming, it should certainly be thought about, and especially if it's a business that's going to be there, whether it's semis or more and more cars-
Right.
-that is more traffic on the road for everyone, including the road, to endure. So, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Anybody, any other questions for Ms. Fisher?
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, or is there anyone else present would like to speak either for against Resolution Number PC 22-23? Hearing none, any discussion among the commissioners? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number PC 22-23?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution PC 22-23, based on the following finding of fact. One, this proposal meets the economic development plan of the city. Two, the proposed zoning is similar to the county zoning classification of the properties across this road.
No, 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 wait a minute. What do you mean?
They're light industrial, it's, it's county zoning.
You mean, for the light industrial-
Yeah, so the, so the proposed property is light, wants to be light industrial. The existing properties across the road that have a county classification, zoning classification, are basically light industrial zoning also.
Are there differences between our light industrial and the county's light industrial?
Yes, there, there are some, and a lot of them are site, site-specific, so characteristics of the site other than just the use, how the parking lot's built, the landscaping that's required, setbacks from the roadway, setback, the transitions from other properties.
Aren't ours much more restrictive than the-
Much more restrictive.
I think you're going the wrong way.
I, so-
In terms of use, I think she's saying-
I'm speaking in terms of use.
Okay, let's make that clear.
Uses.
Let's make that clear.
Okay. The proposed zoning is similar to the uses of the, the permitted uses of the county zoning classification of the properties across the road.
And, and I, that is a true statement, but the 120 acres doesn't have to be zoned light industrial. There could be a corridor adjacent, directly adjacent to Looney Road that would not infringe on the rights of the neighborhood property owners that are already there. So, you're saying, well, there's light industrial over here, but you're ignoring the residential to the south, and you're ignoring the comprehensive plan which proposed the residential continuing to the north.
Okay, no, I didn't, I didn't ignore anything, I said what I said.
Yeah, I don't-
Okay, I, I agree with what you say. My perception is that it's far more limited, that the 120 acres for light industrial is that, even though across the street it's light industrial, it doesn't mean that you can go all the way to Columbus, light industrial.
No, we're only talking about this 120-acre plot.
Yeah, and that 120-acre plot could be a 40-acre plot.
Well, that's not what's the issue.
That's not what's before us.
So we can vote-
Right.
You can vote a or nay.
If you think that's what ought to be, then you'd vote nay.
Right, absolutely. That's exactly correct. But as a statement of fact, I have a different view of the facts presented.
Right.
And I've already stated that.
But, also take in mind that the developer's not interested in doing that, he would like to develop that whole 120 acres as light industrial.
That, that has always been-
And there's no reason, there's no reason it can't easily be done with, with, with streets. You don't have to, you don't have to just come straight off of Looney with a parking lot.
No, I, what I'm saying is, is that the zoning is not a taking of property. It is, is, it's an extension of what the citizens want for property development. These citizens viewed that it was going to be residential, they, initially it was agricultural-
Right.
-but then they're saying, well, it could probably go residential. They weren't aware of the comprehensive plan saying it was going to be residential expansion area. All around the city, we need to be aware that, you know, we, we don't want to have different zoning areas adjacent to our residential districts.
Yeah, but sooner or later, you're going to have-
But then eventually your-
That's what the comprehensive plan-
But eventually your city will just be all residential.
That's, that's absolutely wrong. If you look on the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of areas, basically almost half of the area in the county outside the city limits, that is zoned for economic expansion. So, I, that's, that's my opinion.
And, and that's fine.
And we've read this, so are there anything else that needs to be said?
There's a motion and a second.
Did you finish?
A motion and a second.
Yes.
And, are you done?
Well, so you're not saying in your statements that you're adding on to this, that the uses that are across the street have to be the same uses that are on-
No, they're similar, they're, they're-
What's that, see, that, what's that mean?
They're light industrial.
Good.
The, the uses across the county or across the road are light industrial.
And, and as Pickwa's code states light industrial usages, that would be what our site would be.
I hate, I hate to interrupt, I just want to point out how the rezoning process, it, this is, you're acting in an advisory capacity to the city commission-
To the commission.
And they, they can choose whatever they want with this property. They can, they can run for city commission based on an anti-industrial platform and with no reason whatsoever decide to vote one way or the other. You, so your findings of fact here don't have to be strict and, you know, judicious in that way, you're, because you're acting in an advisory capacity. So you're, you find your reasons for making a recommendation, and that's all you have to do.
But, but I think it has to be clear what she's talking about.
Sure, sure.
Okay. At this time, if you could poll the commissioners.
Mr.-
in that way, you're, because you're acting in an advisory capacity. So, you're, you find your reasons for making a recommendation, and that's all you have to do.
But, but I think it has to be clear what she's talking about.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, if you could poll the commissioners.
Mr. Koenig?
Nay.
Ms. Brandon?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC twenty-two dash twenty-three is approved. Now, the next resolution is Resolution Number PC twenty-three dash twenty-three.
Resolution PC twenty-three dash twenty-three is a resolution requesting a recommendation for approval of plans to construct an enclosure for salt storage at the City of Pickwa Public Works Facility at eight fifty-nine North Main Street, zoned IH heavy industrial.
It'll be eight fifty-nine South Main Street. So, this tract of land is the Public Works property that is in between the Great Miami River Trail and then South Main or, or twenty-five A, wherever that would be. They are, the Public Works Department is looking to replace this building shown on the screen right now, which is actually, I've taken this screenshot from the bike path view, so you can't see it too, too well from, from the street, but behind there, that's where the salt barn is currently located. It's super old and has needed to be replaced for a very long time. What the Public Works Department is looking to do is replace it with a facility that is quite similar to, actually, it's identical to this building on the left in Troy, which is at ODOT's facility or just outside of Troy, I think. Now, this image here, since I couldn't get anything that I knew was exactly right, this is more approximated, but what it is, is a, it's an arc that has a frame and a canvas over it that protects the salt, and that's really it. It's a very basic building, and what it does is protect the salt from getting eroded away or rained on and provide storage for the city for use over the winter. We bring this to you because we like to keep a policy of having new builds come before the Planning Commission to seek a recommendation so that when staff goes to the City Commission to ask for financial approval, that, you know, that any comments or concerns or suggestions from some outside group at least is, is known, and we usually take these to the Planning Commission.
What direction would...
Go ahead.
Yeah, what direction would the open area be, north, southeast, or west?
Uh, north. It's going to be...
Be north.
It's kind of just going to sit exactly where this is, and then the back of that building is a little bit longer than the structure here, so it extends a little bit toward the south, but the opening is toward the north.
Okay, sort of, and it'll run parallel to Main, so the rain won't, will be perpendicular, hopefully, to the opening, right?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions of the commissioners? Is there a applicant present? Or are you speaking on behalf of the applicant?
I'm speaking on behalf of Brian Brookhart.
Is anyone present here would like to speak for against Resolution Number PC twenty-three dash twenty-three? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. The Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established findings that indicate the proposed facility will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the community, and conforms to all applicable plans and policies of the city. This time, could you poll the commission?
Mr. Koenig?
Aye.
Ms. Brandon?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution Number PC twenty-three dash twenty-three is approved. Moving on to Resolution Number PC twenty-four dash twenty-three.
Resolution PC twenty-four dash twenty-three is a resolution requesting a recommendation for approval of a battery testing facility on City of Pickwa property to be located at parcel N forty-four dash two-five-zero-zero-eight-four, zoned IL light industrial.
This piece of property is also owned by the City of Pickwa. Across the street, you'd find roadside park and then the old water treatment plant. On this side, there's also water treatment plant infrastructure that's left over, and then police training, actually, the footprint of this proposed building is over the old police training pool. So, they have already demolished that pool. It was no longer necessary for their operations, and what is being proposed is a, basically a metal building that will be owned by the City of Pickwa. They've chosen some preliminary design colors, black and white, and it, it's pretty nondescript from there, but what would be going in, on inside is testing, like, small scale testing of, of batteries. And this is brokering a deal between the city and, and the, the end user. We have Matt Bowman here who is leading the project, and he's here to answer any questions about the project. There's also proposed potentially an expansion of the parking area that's there on this road. This, especially due to the fact that this, this piece of land is downstream of a dam, there's no, there is no development around it. We've been winding down having any residences around there because we have to hold this area steady for, so that we can declassify dams and keep them at a, a certain level so that the development opportunities up here and around this area are quite limited for that reason. Staff recommends approval of the request.
Where, where do the batteries come from?
I would like to point to Mr. Bowman to, to talk about the...
Sir, Mr. Bowman? Yeah, please come forward. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you for seeing me. I'm Matt Bowman. I am representing the Energy Security Agency. So, there's a lot of different agencies that are a part of that property. So, we still have active, we have a new fire building going up right there. We still have the police that's doing moderate training in, in their older stuff. This particular building will not have any battery testing going on at all. That is actually changed. This is about complete training.
What kind of training?
It'll be about training. So, this part of the building will have a lift inside of it and classrooms. We'll be using the bathroom that's associated with the police building for now because there's no water in the building, and this will be, the education purpose of this is how to remove and adjust traction battery packs in electric vehicles. So, everything in this is going to be about electrical vehicle maintenance all the way, all the way from OEMs and so on and so forth. So, we are in the spirit of light industrial, bringing fifteen to twenty students every single week from all over the world to this facility, to that particular building, just for that training. So, again, it's a light commercial use, it's a pole barn building. The pool is still there, but that is exactly where we were going to move that. We met with the police chief, talked about that side of it. They will also have access to our building to be able to have a little bit more room to expand out when they need to for Citizens Academy, things like that, things that we can work into the calendar. So, the batteries that you asked about specifically are traction battery packs that are in electric vehicles.
EVs?
Yes, sir.
Um, I guess the question is, I'm kind of surprised that you're, you're a city employee?
I am not, not for this city.
What, so you're a...
I, I'm representing the Energy Security Agency, so we are doing the education side of that.
Does that come from what government, though? What state?
Oh, it's not a government, we're a private entity.
Private entity?
Yes, but we are endorsed, we have a federal endorsement, so think of SpaceX, then us.
So, this is like, you're going to lease this?
We are in the, we are in the process of a lease with Kevin, who's operating the, obviously, the water treatment grounds, if you will. So, we're, I think we're down to all the red tapes, it should be over. We're waiting on this and erect our building and hope to be, hope to be having our first classes by September with your, obviously, with your endorsement, so.
Yeah, it seems to me it should be private industry thing.
Yes, it is, but it's, it's for all variations, so the people that will be coming through, there will be everything from first responders to collision centers to OEMs. That, that's the caliber, if you will, of that will be coming to us.
A lot of them would be government employees and private industry.
Correct. Correct, DOT training, so on and so forth.
Okay, I, I just, uh...
There's one other slide in there about the additional pad. I don't know if we made it on there, so basically, we back up to the hill. So, if you look on the current, the current demographics there, you will see on the upper left, right in there, we currently have three, I think there's one, two, there's three forty by forty pads there now that containers sit on, and there's a, we need to add an additional forty by forty pad, just adding to where it is to get it up off the ground.
So, the city has long-term leases, would this be a long-term lease?
This is, well, we're, we're looking at it.
So, the city does long-term leases with a lot of different vendors? Is this true, or is this the first one?
Uh, I don't think this is the first one. I'm trying to think of corresponding kinds of leases. Sometimes there's small areas of parks that get leased out, like in the, I mean, the case of, like, the, what am I trying to say? The shared, the community garden at Pitts and Barker, that's one that comes to mind. On occasion, for economic development purposes, the city will lease out land, like, that's, that's something that was planned to, at one point in time, occur with the Bridge Street Project, one twenty-five Bridge Street, and then the, the Public Works Facility. So, they, they were conducting those leases for a period of time, but yeah, it, it's not entirely new, and the, and Mr. Bowman's correct, there's a, a fire training building that's also being constructed up there, and that gets used in a similar kind of classroom way.
So, if you see on that drawing there, you'll see the two, where the green space between the two parking lots, or where the parking spaces are identified, that's where their building is going up. That's where the fire department building is going up.
Yeah, it's, it just seems to me that it, it could certainly go in this new industrial, light industrial area that we're talking about, this, this function, but you wanted to put it in a city properties.
Yeah, well, we have a lot invested there already, yeah.
Okay, well, it's, it's really, I don't see the, this is a City Commission privatization thing going on here? You're going into leasing and that kind of thing? Very good, okay.
Anybody have anything for me?
No.
Is there any problem with this being, this is an official floodplain, correct?
Uh, surprisingly, no, I don't think it is.
It's not, even though it's right below the levee.
Yeah, and I've checked that for my own property, and, and it's not marked that way as being in the FEMA hundred-year floodplain. But I will say that it's, it's even more restrictive what we would have to do if this use intensity really jumped up and ODNR were interested in, well, now we need to protect that interest. I, I think it's, one, helpful that the city owns that building, and because they do, we get to control the use intensity that's inside of it versus selling off a parcel of land or something like that that you lose control over. But yeah, there's only so much you can do, and since this is periodic testing and, or I guess I shouldn't say testing, but training, usage, there's a cabinetry place across the street, that's about as intense as it gets because somebody else owns it, and we don't have control over that. But yeah, there's only so much that you, you can do with this land before ODNR is going to say...
So, they don't have a problem with the floodplain development?
No, and we checked with that, and it's not a flood, it's not technically a floodplain, even though it's kind of a man-made disaster zone that, you know, in their eyes.
Yeah, because we, uh, the city removed two houses in the same general area because, I assume that's a floodplain, too.
It wasn't because it was in the floodplain, it's because of that, that require, so basically, that's the, that dam classification, class-one dams or anything where there's, there's a possible loss of life due, especially due to residences being downstream of the dam. So, you get rid of those residences, and now you're automatically able to start considering yourself into the class-two or class-three category for those dams. That's why.
Joe, I heard they hired six or eight little Dutch girls to stick their finger in there if there's any leaking going on.
Okay, well, that's fine. That's fine.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Anybody else want to speak for against Resolution Number PC twenty-four twenty-three?
Does this need to be, oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Just a quick question, does this need to be amended since the resolution says battery testing, or is that...
I think we'd have to amend it.
Okay.
Before we go forward.
Yeah, because that's, that's a different...
To something like training facility.
Yeah, okay.
Private...
Lithium battery training facility.
Yeah, private, private, private industry training facility. How about that? Is that close enough?
Sure.
Okay. First, we'll hear, just Ms. Fisher.
Terry Cyvers, eleven twenty-one.
Oh, Cyvers, Terri C. Cyvers, okay.
Water, I had some clarification questions for Mr. Bowman, please. So, you said you're with the Ener- E- Energy Securities Area?
Security Agency.
Security Agency? Is that the name of, like, if I was to look that up, I would find who you're working for? Okay, and where are they out of?
We're out of Dublin.
Dublin?
Dublin, Ohio.
Thank you.
And, to me, I need to get a background, so, so, I'll just do that bill.
Okay. Um, so, the other thing you mentioned was you're going to be an educational facility for things like first responders, people working with EVs, was, was it all for that? Okay, so, you said the facility would attract twenty students, and I missed the timeframe for that, like, how often would you bring in twenty new students for an education program?
Depending on the, depending on the program.
Sure.
It might be one week, it might be two days, it might be three weeks, or it's getting to three days.
Which makes sense, the depth of, depth of the...
It's definitely different depending on what you're doing.
That makes sense, the depth of the, the educational...
Correct.
Okay, and then, uh, some of it you, you discussed, but I just was kind of wondering, what is the, what would be the service range of your facility? So, you have this facility here, and it, it teaches this skill. Who is your closest competitor? So, what, what is your range of service for this area?
So, we started this company two years ago. We currently have endorsements from the DSB. We currently are endorsed by DMT, so on and so forth, and we've been providing medical grant from, a medical grant with the NRPA to develop techniques and so on, so we're providing fires. There's no battery testing going on, obviously, in that facility, but what I'm getting at, we're currently traveling to education, going and providing lecture and providing kids on training. This is where we can conduct everything, we'll carry it around.
So, um, so you're in Dublin also?
Correct.
So, um, how far do you expect the range of this educational facility to reach? Like, for the people coming in to be...
All, all over the United States.
Okay. Okay, that's what I, that's what I was looking for. And then, uh, for, you may not know this, but for the M part, the students that are coming in for the education, how much of the end user would be in this area? I mean, what was the, what was the focus of...
Obviously, they'll be hosted while they're here, so, near local food, hotels, so on and so forth, we're not chugging people in an outdoor day where we'll set up agreements with things locally.
So, while, while the, it partially is, yes, but the other part of it is, when...
Ma'am, do you have anything for the board, or can you guys talk afterwards?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I was just, I was just clarification questions.
We don't need, we don't need you on the mic then and stuff. You guys can go ahead and talk whatever you want, so.
There you go.
Yes, the, the proposed new building, who's paying for the construction?
We are. The Energy Security Agency.
Okay. So, you're going to enter into like a hundred-year lease or something?
I would love to, but I believe we're, we're probably looking at a five, five-year lease, depending on, depending on negotiation between attorneys and, you know, city elected officials and so on and so forth.
Okay, well, it's an underutilized area. Can it be conveyed? That's, that property be conveyed to the Energy Security Agency? Why would the city remain in, retain an interest?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I, I think, I think that between the, the Burn Building and this building, that I think they were just thinking of an educational campus of, of sorts, but I can't answer the question on why the city decided it was more advantageous to do it this way over, over parcelling off and selling.
Yeah, I, I'm just, yeah, I'm just throwing that out. It makes more sense to me to just provide them access to it and sell it to them. But anyway, that's not a...
Yeah, I think we're just...
We're not looking at that. Okay, are there any other comments with, for against Resolution Number PC twenty-four dash twenty-three? Hearing none, do we have a motion to change the Resolution Number PC twenty-four dash twenty-three? And I would propose the motion to be where staff has presented construction documents for a private industry training facility on the City of Pickwa property at parcel et cetera, et cetera. Are there any, do I have a second to amend the resolution to include that amended language?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's amended. At this time, uh, the Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established findings that the proposed construction will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the community, and conforms to all applicable plans and policies of the city. This time, could you poll the commission?
Mr. Koenig?
Aye.
Ms. Brandon?
Aye.
Mr. Bub?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye. Resolution Number PC twenty-four dash twenty-three is approved. Now let's move to Resolution Number PC twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Resolution PC twenty-five dash twenty-three is a resolution requesting a recommendation of approval of a historic district color palette for the downtown historic district.
Okay, so we can, this is a, an opening for this topic. You don't, there's no pressure to, um, to approve tonight if you're not, you know, if you want to have further discussion. But what this item is doing is exercising an ability within the, the new zoning code for the Planning Commission to authorize the, um, the Development Director or me as a designee to approve certificates of appropriateness of a minor, you know, I'm sorry, like in a minor category, which would include repainting of a building that's already been painted within the district, nothing that hasn't been painted before, using a specific color palette that, um, colors chosen from this palette here. And I considered referencing just directly this book. At first, I, I did, and then I took it off, and then the more I've researched, the more I realize that every other expert is still referencing this book. So it, this seems to be the bible on, on color choices for Victorian-era, um, kind of mid eighteen hundreds to early nineteen hundreds construction. So, so, um, I guess what I want to say is that I, I am not an architect, and I didn't start out as one, but I am educating myself to the best of my ability to be able to faithfully help other people choose the appropriate colors, and not just what color they are, but how to paint a building, which I think is, to, to me, sticks out, um, as we take things through this. It's not really always just about the specific color choice, but, um, the idea to avoid whitewashing very interesting architectural details and bringing highlights and lowlights to things that are, um, would stand out on a building to make it prettier. So, you know, when we can accomplish that, then we really bring out the, the beauty of our existing building stock. So that's important. There's a, there's a full methodology in this book, and also found elsewhere on how to do that. And this book gives a kind of range of choices for communities to make in terms of selecting colors and for, um, for a historic house or a historic structure. And that, you can choose between going, um, fully scientific in terms of discovering what an existing building's paint used to be by scraping and testing, and, and really actually hiring somebody who's specialized in doing that to help you determine what the colors were. You could go somewhere in between, which is to select any color palette that is generally accepted that was used in that time period. Or you could go more eclectic and get really fun with your colors. What, what you have in front of you represents that middle choice of, um, choosing historically appropriate colors using the arrangements that existed in the past. I think this color palette, you know, as I flipped through it, I was very relieved to find certain colors that people like right now, even, including a tone of black, which is something that people have been proposing over and over, so that's in there. And, you know, for example, three twenty-five North Main Street, all those colors are represented here, the building that was recently painted. So that's great because building owners are going to find colors that, that seem suitable to them right here in this palette, and then they would have additional guidance on, for example, the, um, that building really should have three colors instead of two. And that's a really good thing to, um, direct people to do because it highlights those architectural features. So how this would work is somebody could come with a proposal to me, I could approve that proposal administratively or guide them to how, what could get them that administrative approval. Let's say we disagree, they could always come to the Planning Commission again, or if it's complicated enough, and I feel like I'm out of my element to, to make that judgment, we would come to the Planning Commission again. So the simple stuff, um, it seems like not making people wait the extra period of time is helpful to them. So that's why this mechanism exists, and I'm here to answer questions, of course.
Would this apply to a building that's not historic but in the historic district?
That's a great question. Uh, yes.
It would.
Yes. As far as the limitation on colors?
Yes.
It's a great question.
Because it doesn't really say.
Actually, it, it, it should, it should go back to the time period that it is.
Yeah, we've talked about certain things not really being those contributing structures within a historic district. Do you have a suggestion for that? Do you want things to be more district?
We don't have a lot of those, but there is a couple art deco buildings and things like that that you would need to look up a different style and see what that, what those colors were.
But I was talking about a nonhistoric building, or a building that has been redone, so it's no longer historic.
Yeah, like the previous triple-A building.
Yeah, anything that's, that is obviously not historic, would, would it fit into this, I guess, because it's in the, or would it have to be an historic building first to apply for this?
I can tell you how I would act, if it's a building I've already dealt with, it's already been to the Planning Commission, I've already heard your judgment that it's not historic, that's a pretty easy call, that, you know, if we treated it that way in the past, we would continue. So like that, the former triple-A building.
Right.
White, black, not really following some historic palette because it's not a historic building anymore.
The resolution doesn't define that.
That's true.
It, it's basically telling you that every building, regardless of where it is, follows this palette, and I'm not sure that's what we really want to do.
Yeah, and it's, so I seek your judgment, too, on kind of passing that on to me. So how much you want to give me discretion to take things before you as needed, that's kind of up to you. If you want to carve out something for, um, you know, non-contributing structures that are within the historic district, that's fine. I, you know, I'm more than happy to take that flexibility, of course.
And, and I would say, if you give them the rules of thumb that we're trying to have the buildings look historically plausible to the time period that they were built. Okay? And that's how I would put it, too, because we're not really educating the scientific method unless they really want to get into that, you know? And to be honest with you, that's mostly houses, because a lot of the commercial buildings have been sandblasted and whatnot. They have at least three colors, you know, that the body of the building isn't generally the lightest one. There are some exceptions, but generally, it's not. Usually, they have a light and a dark to pick up architectural highlights. And, 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 yeah, if there's some buildings that are built, I don't know if we have very many prior to the Civil War anymore. I'd have to think, and we'd have to check, I think. Jim, Jim Oda would.
I think we do. Along the canal, there are some that are older than that.
But I think that book kind of goes from the Civil War to the nineteen hundred, doesn't it?
Right.
Roughly. And that's most of ours, by far. But if there's something that is, say, a commercial style that is from nineteen twenty, or art deco from nineteen thirty, or something like that, um, then we'd probably have to look a little closer to some, some appropriate colors for that building. Although a lot of those are masonry, so, you know, hopefully, they're not painting that.
That's what I've found, and there's, you know, the Greek Revival stuff, stuff that you wouldn't paint at all, you know, or leave it the way it is now. It, yeah, there's, there are some buildings that seem very obvious to me because we have done them many times, kind of how you would plan those, those paint schemes out. And then there are other exceptions within the district, and there's some that are non-contributing, so you have that complication. I think some of the original reason to try to move a lot of this, a lot of the sign review, this kind of, these kinds of actions where they are sort of periodic, is that when things take forever, and I don't mean to say they take forever and ever, but they, when things take longer than usual or people expect, sometimes they skirt right around it, we deal with it later. It's difficult. It's really nice if we can create a process that seems very quick and efficient to help guide people where they know they can walk, uh, to the city building, get some preliminary feedback, and potentially even be able to select paint colors all at the same time, you know, start, start from that standpoint. And that's not all buildings, that's just some of our building stock that would be available to do that with.
And the other thing you did is, is you picked Benjamin Moore, which is a very good paint company. They're out of Indianapolis. But anybody, I like Sherwin-Williams because it's Ohio company, but they're right here, and they can computer match any of that stuff. So it isn't really important what the paint is, well, it actually is, but it isn't really important what the manufacturer is. It's important that the, what the colors are. So, uh, that's the most historical colors I've seen of any paint company.
Yeah, I think the, the Benjamin Moore is this, the palette, but they could, it could be another manufacturer.
Could be any manufacturer.
As long as it's similar, yeah, okay.
As long as it's the same color. They can computer match it, so.
Yeah, we're not, we're not really brand-specific. You can buy your paint anywhere, and you can color match, and that, we encourage people to do that.
Now, I, I don't know if it helps at this point or hurts, but, but somewhere in my house, I have a pack of paint chips that I matched from the book. Remember, remember, they had original paint manufacturers, and then they had like what the new manufacturer was. But that new manufacturer was like back in the eighties, but I'm from there. So I, I actually matched those all up, and then I put the historical name on the back. I don't know if that'd be of any use or not, but.
I think it'd be very, very useful.
If somebody is more scientifically oriented, that may be like, okay, well, these were the paints that were actually readily available.
Right.
So chances are, somebody picked that.
It'd be nice to do a Pickwa company and not a Benjamin Moore company, too, because Benjamin Moore is sold outside of the city.
Sure.
But Sherwin-Williams is within, or, or somewhere within the city limits.
Yeah, again, they can computer match.
Right.
I can't remember, I think the reason I selected this was because it just had such a ready-made color palette. And I'm not sure I found that on, on, but I can, I can check. Um, I can check.
So, so back to the wording on the historical homes, we, we need to amend this to exclude a non-historic home?
Build, uh.
Or building, or structure.
City ever identified contributing structures?
Um, there, we, I think more like Mr. Bub said, there are, there are fewer non-contributing structures.
But we haven't documented it, provided it to the owners.
Correct.
Yeah, we've talked about this, but certainly, the contributing structures would be excluded with Commissioner Wilson. I mean, they would be included, and the others would be.
So the non-contributing structures are the ones that would be excluded, right?
I think you're, I think what you're asking is for them to be excluded from having to use this palette, but still be allowed to have administrative approval.
Oh, yeah, they could, but.
We would still have administrative approval, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. When we get the contributing structures.
What I envision is another GIS layer where somebody can click their structure, pull open the, the records that the Ohio Historical Society produce that are sitting in the history department at the library, see all the information I go look up when I look at individual properties, and then have a city pre-suggested route on, you know, this is going to take X number of colors, most likely, or whatever, some details so that you know upfront.
The proper.
Yeah, they would know everything.
The vision. I like the vision. It's fantastic. Thank you.
Make it so, number one.
Okay, so do we need to, okay, what do you suggest?
I'll move to amend Resolution PC twenty-five dash twenty-three on the second line after the word palette to say this does not apply to non-contributing structures?
I think there's also a public comment, just FYI, and, but thank you.
That's fine, we can still.
Yes.
Is that, does that work for everybody?
Yeah, and then we can open it up with the amended resolution.
Or, or, or structures built outside the time period of that, of the paint palette that's, that we have here. You know what I mean?
You can, you can also add, uh, you know, provision with staff's judgment because we can see that there's those that were built originally in a certain time period, and then eroded over time with, with layers on top of them, and, and usually you can spot the difference, and it's hard to write out in some definition.
So what is, so I've got, uh, the city staff has requested Planning Commission approval of a historic color pad, and this does not comply to non-contributing structures, and Brad, what was yours?
Buildings outside the time period of the paint palette.
And buildings.
Built outside the time period of the paint palette.
Buildings.
Constructed.
Built. Outside.
Whatever Eddie thinks.
Of, uh.
All right.
Paint.
I think it's time to go home.
Palette. Okay, is there, all in favor of the?
Need a second.
Okay, we need a second.
Yeah.
All in favor of the amended language on the resolution, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? At this time, uh, let's go to public comment. Anyone would like to come forward to speak for, against the amended Resolution Number PC twenty-five dash twenty-three?
Melanie Walker, I reside at five twenty-six North Wayne Street. And I have been through this process twice with downtown businesses. And I love the idea that it would be put over here instead of me having to come up here and wait the time period to get in on, on your schedule and that. I have no problem with it because it's been all along that there's been a discussion. I do have a problem with, you're listing Benjamin Moore, and I did do my business in that, looking around. Sherwin-Williams has a historical color palette, and at the bottom of it, it has colonial revival, late Victorian, the Jazz era, and it has little asterisks by the colors, so you can see what were colors during that time period that that was built. And I do know that Sherwin-Williams has the color, um, the color palette, and they will match any of the Benjamin Moore. Being a small business, I want to support what's here in town, and I do go to Ace Hardware also, even though it's on the county edge. But I really think that we should support our Pickwa businesses, so.
I can't remember what kind Ace handles.
Benjamin Moore.
Oh, they were Benjamin Moore?
Yes.
They're the only ones.
But they're, they're not in the city limits.
Right, yeah. No, it doesn't matter to us. I think we're more about the colors.
Right.
That has more colors than that does, so it'd be nice.
But they have more colors than what's in this palette. And I did, I was at Ace today. They are ordering these in. So, um, Benjamin Moore has a hundred and ninety-one colors listed.
Their citizens live in Pickwa, the owners.
I think, I think we could add that to the.
Yeah, and Sherwin-Williams historical color palette.
Yeah, I can operate from, from either, and, and I mean, it fits. Have both resources. If I have that flexibility to do so, I definitely would do it.
Okay.
Makes sense.
But like I said, I have no problem. I'm all in favor, any of the steps they can take out. Because when we first moved into town, first of all, we had no idea that we had to have go through all these processes that we've gone through. Thank goodness for Lorna telling us all along the way. But we had to wait, and we waited on the second building downtown because we had to get you all this approval before we could paint, and we missed two different time slots because of that. So I think that it's wonderful that we can just go right to Kirsten about it, Kirsten. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
I'll take it.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to amend to have on the second line the use of Benjamin Moore and Sherwin-Williams historical color palette?
Yeah, so moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, at this time, is there any more, uh, anyone else present would like to speak for, against Resolution Number PC twenty-five dash twenty-three?
Just about worn them all out.
Okay. They're still going. So.
I'll make a motion to approve PC twenty-five dash twenty-three.
We have motion, we have second?
Second.
We have a motion as second to approve Resolution Number PC twenty-five dash twenty-three. The Planning Commission has studied the request, conducted a public hearing on the matter, and has established a fact that the proposed amended resolution preserves distinctive stylistic features and examples of skilled craftsmanship of historic buildings and other historic assets, achieves the high design quality sought within the downtown historic district, is compatible with the general economic development policies of the city, will not threaten the general health, safety, and welfare of the public or properties affected, and conforms to all other applicable plans, policies, and regulations of the city. This time, could you poll the commissioners?
Mr. Koenig?
Aye.
Ms. Brandon?
Ms. Brandon?
Aye.
Mr. Bupp?
Aye.
Mr. Harvey?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number PC 25-23 is approved. There being no more new business, I believe there's an update, a status update?